Estamos viendo un accidente de tráfico que se produjo en una ciudad de Los Angeles donde un adolescente decidió correr a la policía y resultó estropear un automóvil.
585, 9, 506, 3 506, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
Estamos viendo un accidente de tráfico que se produjo en una ciudad de Los Angeles donde un adolescente decidió correr a la policía y resultó estropear un automóvil.
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
585, 9, 506, 3
Nunca hemos visto un accidente de tráfico así antes, donde un adolescente decidió correr a la policía y resultó estropear un automóvil.
585, 9, 506, 3 585, 9, 506, 3 585, 9, 506, 3
Las leyes de curviosanza limitan el derecho de los juveniles a salir o estar en lugares públicos después de las 10 p.m. hasta el sol el día siguiente. Esas leyes aspiran a establecer una comunidad más segura y a proteger mejor a las personas de convertirse en víctimas de crímenes o involucrarse en cualquier crimen. La mayoría de la gente no está de acuerdo con nuestras leyes de curviosanza y prefieren correr el riesgo de ser tomado por la policía y citado por violación de las leyes de curviosanza. Sin embargo, son más propensos a entrar en los muchos peligros reales que enfrentamos cada vez que salimos por la noche.
Nos dimos cuenta de que los niños que salen tan tarde normalmente son atrapados en violencia, en accidentes de tráfico y que son de mal gusto. Algunos de estos niños aún no están conscientes de la ley y no están educados en ello.
Beber, drogas, predadores sexuales y actividades de grupos son solo algunos de los peligros que enfrentamos no importando la edad o la edad de los niños. Si usted es menor de 18 años, esta ley se aplica a usted. ¿Qué pasa si es atrapado? Se tomará a su paro en la estación donde el boleto será entregado a usted y a su padre o guardián para tomarlo. Si su padre no puede tomarlo, estará situado en custodia o enviado a una unidad juvenil.
¿Un guardián? ¿Algo como un evento como el de Grillo Beach?
El guardián no es solo alguien designado por los padres, el guardián es alguien designado por los tribunales.
Usted puede permanecer en casa si participa en una actividad religiosa, educacional o política acompañada por un padre o un guardián, va o va a su lugar de empleo, responde a algún tipo de emergencia, regresa a casa de la escuela, actividad cultural o recreativa.
Ese es nuestro mensaje, no solo aplicar la violación de las leyes de curviosanza sino también educarlos a que deben permanecer en casa y estar seguros.
Las leyes de curviosanza no son solo aquí para protegernos, son aquí para proteger la seguridad de todos en nuestra comunidad.
While we're waiting for one more member to arrive, we'll go ahead and start with presentations.
Good morning, Mr. President. And we are joined by our colleague Nuri Martinez this morning, and we are bringing awareness to the diabetes crises in Los Angeles. This issue was raised recently on news reports and NPR. The issue is diabetes, and we're going to be joined this morning by Laurleen Gaines. Ms. Gaines, if you would please join us from, yes, from the American Diabetes Association. As Chair of Arts Parks Health Aging in the Los Angeles River Committee, I wanted to share some information with the public about diabetes. It's a problem that has increasingly become more prevalent in all of our neighborhoods. According to a recent survey, Latinos have said the most concerning health issue for them and their families is diabetes. The report on NPR earlier this year also says that nearly 10% of Latino adults have been diagnosed with pre-diabetes. Dr. Ann Peters, a diabetes specialist and professor at the University of Southern California Keck School of Medicine, estimates that about 12% of Latino population she sees every day has diabetes. I would like to bring awareness to this growing problem that is disproportionately affecting a specific key sector in our population. And now, we would like to invite Councilmember Nuri Martinez to say a few words. Nuri?
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Your Spanish is only getting better and better every day.
Thanks.
And thank you, Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, for bringing awareness to this important issue before the council today. As my colleague mentioned, Latino diabetes rates are nearly double the rate of non-Latinos. But this is an important issue facing not only the Latino community, but all communities throughout Los Angeles, and it comes down to awareness and personal responsibility. Too many people know that they're at risk of di— too many peo— too few people know that they're at risk of diabetes, and they don't realize that by losing just a moderate amount of weight between 15 to— 10 to 15 pounds, they can cut the risk of diabetes in half. And it's just not about their own risk, that they're—not only affecting their own health, but they also need to ask the question is whether they're—they're at risk and if they're putting their children and their families at risk as well. We need to teach the next generation the importance of good health and understanding personal responsibility, because awareness is the first step to healthy, vibrant communities across Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Nuri. And today, we have a great representative of the American Diabetes Association with us. As I mentioned before, Laurleen Gaines is a nurse who is also an ADA national volunteer and a local resident. She's very well-versed in speaking on the issue of diabetes and on its impact on the community, the Latino community in particular. Please join me in welcoming Laurleen Gaines.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here on behalf of the American Diabetes Association to share with you the importance of a Diabetes Alert Day. This is a very important day to us. It's usually the fourth Tuesday of the month of March, and I just want to remind everyone that, you know, people are very cavalier about this disease, but it's a silent killer. Over 26 million individuals in this nation have diabetes, and 5% of them are children. There are 79 million individuals that are prediabetics, and many of them have no idea that they're diabetics. On this day, Alert Day, we encourage everyone to take the—the test, the Type 2 test, which you go online, go to diabetes.org, or call our 1-800 number and chat with someone. It's a wonderful website, gives you a great deal of information. But when we talk about weight gain, we talk about our eating patterns, we talk about age, we talk about history, and we talk about the Latino community, which is the community I serve largely. My students and I are out in the community because diabetes is our community outreach. Every year, we have done activities to bring greater awareness to this disease. The number-one killer in the country is heart disease, but many times, those persons that are diagnosed with heart disease actually have diabetes. So if you want to do something, do what I did partially coming up here this morning. I was so lost, I took the stairs a part of the way, which is what we should all do. I was not planning on doing so, but simple exercise makes a difference. You don't have to go to a gym. And I tell the clients that we deal with that it's not about money, it's about changing lifestyles, and we know that behavioral changes come hard. So if you really want to truly make a difference, I encourage each and every one of you to take the risk test today. It's very simple, don't be frightened, and if you find that you are truly at risk, see your physician so that you make sure the appropriate tests are done to fully diagnose what you can do to make a difference in your care. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and let me just give you a shout-out as well for ADA. I've been on the American Diabetes Board for 17 years and have personally raised millions of dollars along with my partners, Arvy and Arnie, and our political roast, and want to thank Paul Coretts for putting himself out there this last week and all the folks that really stepped up. But to Mitchell Farrell and Nuri Martinez, thank you so much. This is one of— this is a disease that we should cure in our lifetime if we put our resources together, if we can raise more money to find a cure. It affects so many millions of Americans every single day, and I can't thank you for everything that you guys did. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mitchell. I—I also want to congratulate you and the organizers of the recent roast. You raised over $500,000. Incredible. $500,000 at the political roast. And Ms. Gaines wanted me to make sure that everyone sees this on our desks to help distribute, help get the word out. And I just want to let you all know that I took the test earlier. I'm a 3 on the scale of 10, 10 being the highest, and it just takes a few seconds. It's real easy to do. So I want to thank you, Ms. Martinez, and thank you colleagues, and thank you to the ADA for this awareness piece. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's give them another round of applause. One second, Mr. Labange. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Why don't we call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Carrasco, Coria, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Eleven members present a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Bloomingfield moves. Bonin seconds. That brings us to our pledge.
Yes, Mr. President.
Why don't we rise? We'll be led today in our flag salute by Mr. Wezar.
Please stand. Everyone in the chambers, put your hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. Madam Clerk, why don't we go through the agenda if we could?
Before we begin, Mr. President, there's requests to continue Item 1O to April 23rd and Item 14 to March 26th.
Okay, without objection, that—that will be the order?
Item 1 is an item known for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Item 1G and L may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid. Also, the lien amount for Item 1B should be reduced to $8,368.84.
Okay, without objection. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on Item 1.
Okay, so let's move on to the next section of our agenda.
Items 2 through 7 are items for which public hearings have been held.
The business has already scored Olympic gold. USF?
All righty then. Okay, the Olympics are still going on, and we were not aware. Okay, so any speakers or members, any specials 2 through 7? I don't see any that's prepared to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Buscaino.
Seven-fourth width, please, seven.
Seven-fourth width. Okay, now let's go to our last section, 8 through 21.
Items 8 through 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Cards on Items 11, 13, 15, 16, 17, 19, and 20.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, now, that brings us to the conclusion of the agenda, correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
So then I'd like to defer to Mr. Labange for a presentation. And I always forget this, Mr. Labange, so why don't we wish Gil Sadio a happy birthday? Happy birthday.
Good job, Gil.
Mr. Sadio. He is 39 and holding, same age as me. All right, Mr.— Mr. Labange, the floor is yours.
Members of the council, Mr. President, let me introduce to you Elizabeth and Eddie Park, who've done a wonderful thing, and I'm going to show you right now— Kenny, if we can have ITA hit it, hit that little roll tape, as they say.
The business has already scored Olympic gold. US athletes will be wearing their sweaters at the Winter Games. As CBS 2's Bobby Capel shows us, the clothing is made in Commerce.
And each sweater has our spirit.
When Elizabeth and Eddie Park got the call from Ralph Lauren that they would be making the official Olympic sweaters to be worn by American athletes during the Games' opening ceremonies, they were in shock.
I said, "Wow." Wow.
The husband-and-wife team owns Ball of Cotton in Commerce, where they employ 60 people, and they've been charged with making all of the 650 limited-edition sweaters heading to Sochi.
Finally, we did it in May in USA. I'm really proud of what I did, and all of my employees appreciate the Ralph Lauren. They gave us opportunity to make a USA Olympic sweater.
So these are the sweaters before they are actually sewn together by hand. You can see they come in 14 different pieces of fabric, and then this is the finished product, and I'll tell you what, it's nice and warm. I think I'm ready to go to Sochi and win a gold myself.
Well, that's it right there. Look at this right here. A wonderful American success story. Immigrated in 1970 from Korea, came to Los Angeles, started their business here in central Los Angeles in downtown, and had to go to Commerce for a larger warehouse. The Ball of Cotton got a call out of the blue, and you look at Eddie, you're like an actor. You—you go, "I can't believe it." And they did such a wonderful job, and I didn't want to let the dust of the Olympics settle without saluting someone here such as the Ball of Cotton. Eddie and Elizabeth Park, very special dedicated skill, did this great job for the Winter Olympic Games in Sochi. It's backed for more than two days— two decades of experience, creating high-end full fashion and artistic quality based on current trends and customers' feedback. And all of the sweaters— because I wanted to get a sweater today, Mr. President, to show it off to you, but it's the Olympic gold, like the Olympic gold, it's with the Olympic Committee and our Olympic athletes, so they don't even have a sample to show, because that's how the Olympics roll in a special way that they do. The Ball of Cotton, as I said, began in a factory in downtown Los Angeles and grown to this 3,000-square-foot facility in Commerce in our neighboring city. Through the Ralph Lauren design, this presented the unity of the United States team showcasing American athletes distinguishing them in very meaningful ways of a colorful nation. But the greatest thing is that someone came to this country in 1970, and who would think that in 30, 30, 40, 44 years later—that's a lucky number—they would decide—they would take the design and create the sweater for our Olympic team? We're very special to have an Olympic relationship. Seoul hosts the Games, and the Winter Games are coming again to Korea the next time. So it's on behalf of the President of the City of Los Angeles Council, our great Herb Wesson, who we share together Koreatown and our love of Korea. It's also our mayor, Mr. Garcetti, that we present the Ball of Cotton to Elizabeth and Eddie on this day, signed by all the members for the great job. Congratulations. Good job. Thank you, everybody, for sharing. Eddie, you want to say something?
My wife said.
Okay. Elizabeth?
Good morning, City Councils and City of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. We didn't really expect this honor, and thank you for the recognition. Thank you very much, and we'll do our best for the City of LA. Thank you.
Now, thank you. Thank you so much.
Come, Sami, da.
Mr. O'Farrell?
President, colleagues, we have the—the visiting sentinels with us today from Belmont High School. Please stand up.
Let's give the sentinels a round of applause. The visiting.
And they are the ninth-grade representatives from the GEAR Up program, which stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. GEAR Up is a college-access program serving the high schools, mostly in the Pico Union area, and they've been in existence since 1999 at Belmont High. I would like to recognize school staff that's here today, represented by Lois Bramwell, the GEAR Up for LA interim project coordinator. Lois, please wave. Are you there? Yes? that in 30, 40, 44 years later, that's a lucky number, they would take the design and create the sweater for our Olympic team? We're very special to have an Olympic relationship. Seoul hosts the Games, and the Winter Games are coming again to Korea the next time. So it's on behalf of the President of the City of Los Angeles Council, our great Herb Wesson, who we share together Koreatown and our love of Korea. It's also our mayor, Mr. Garcetti, that we present the Ball of Cotton to Elizabeth and Eddie on this day, signed by all the members for the great job. Congratulations. Good job. Eddie, you want to say something?
My wife said.
Okay. Elizabeth.
Good morning, City Councils and City of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. We didn't really expect this honor, and thank you for the recognition. Thank you very much, and we'll do our best for the City of LA. Thank you.
Now, thank you. Thank you so much.
Come, Sami.
Mr. O'Farrell?
President, colleagues, we have the visiting sentinels with us today from Belmont High School. Please stand up.
Let's give the sentinels a round of applause. The visiting.
And they are the ninth-grade representatives from the Gear Up program, which stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. Gear Up is a college access program serving the high schools, mostly in the Pico Union area, and they've been in existence since 1999 at Belmont High. I would like to recognize school staff that's here today, represented by Lois Bramwell, the Gear Up for LA interim project coordinator. Lois, please wave. Are you there? Yes, there she is.
Way in the back.
And we have Sharon Yamato-West, who is the site coordinator, Belmont High School, waving back there as well.
In the back as well.
Also Adrian Anselmo, the counselor here today.
All right, in the front. Let's give them a round, another one.
And we have Robert Aguirre, Robert Aguirre, peer mentor coordinator. Wonderful.
All right, and in the back. Mr. O'Farrell, I think we appreciate all you've done, but let's give another round of applause for the young lady in the front. All right? Welcome. Welcome to your city council. Let's go to item 11, called "Special by Cards." Mr. Walsh and Herman, item 11.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting the meeting at Hollywood Dems. This is number 11. This concerns the dissolving of the Arts District Business Improvement, the BID, which everybody pays for. Your landlord pays it, he puts it on your bill when he raises the runt every month. We'd like to see a lot of these business BIDs disappear. The one in Hollywood started well, but now they seem to get along with the gangs, because when I went to them and told them that the building across the street from me at Yuck and Argyle was full of gangs, there wasn't a single BID person who spoke English. They only spoke Croatian. I don't understand. HollywoodHighlands.org, get rid of these phony BIDs. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Herman? Okay, then let's prepare to vote on this item. No speakers in the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now we'll go to, Mr. Walsh, don't go too far away, we'll go to 13, and that's called "Special by..." Mr. Walsh, item 13. Mr. Walsh passes. Okay, let's prepare to vote on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item 15, Mr. Murphy. Sean, item 15, Sean Murphy.
Yes, good morning, Sean Murphy. I like this item. It's a good item. I support it.
Thank you very much. Let's prepare to vote on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Move to item 16, called "Special by Mr. Walsh," item 16.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. As you know, I never get up here when you drag the family of the victim up here for some publicity and have to watch them crying. I have never, and the first time I came to one of these meetings was in the 1980s, seen a family come back and say, "Thank you. The reward worked." Never have I seen that happen. And as you see, I bring my shirt that I bought on Hollywood Boulevard for $25, which says, you may have seen it, it's on my website, "Snitches Get Stitches." I just want everyone to understand, if the murderer of Rosa Vida Toledo Valasena on March 1st, if someone came forward with information to collect a reward, that person would be murdered. Mr. Parks isn't paying attention, because he's auditioning later for another soap opera.
Stay on the item.
And I'm telling, stay on the item. Okay, I'll stay on the item. Why don't you stay on the item? How many, how many? I want to know how many rewards are presently up and how many have been collected. Now, I've asked this again and again, and I want you to know that 95% of the people of the rewards are for minorities, because white people don't get murdered by gangs anywhere near the minority. But Herb Wesson up here, Herb keeps me quiet, and the gangs want to give you a big thank you.
On the item.
Again, Rosa, I want everyone of you to dip the blood in Rosita Toledo's and point it and say, when are we going to find out who murdered her? And stop using this as an excuse for your publicity when you damn well know no gang, no one is going to rat on a gang member or snitches get stitches with a straight razor.
Thank you, thank you. Now, let's prepare to, you're disrupting, so please, and whenever we give you an answer, it goes in one ear and out the other, so why bother? Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item 17, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Herman, item 17.
It is the intent of the law that our actions of business be taken openly, seriously, and our deliberations be conducted openly regarding any and all local agencies. I find it offensive, Mr. Herb Wesson, when you can talk back at any con stitch when you're walking away from you.
This is not the item. If you want to speak, speak on item.
So snitches get stitches. Snitches get stitches. We're talking about rewards, and I want to know for the record, how many rewards have the city paid off or collected on behalf of any person who's been injured, killed, based on this motion here by Mr. Wezar and Englander? Because if you continue to not surprise me at 2334 Cesar Chavez with the illegal smoke shop within Two Parks, what type of business is this going to bring, other than snitches deserve stitches? Because again, the crime will not come down. It only promotes it. And so I say to you, Mr. Wezar, as you speak with Mr. Fuentes there, stop opening these illegal smoke shops and thinking that it's going to resolve a problem of crime.
That's not on the item. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Mr. Walsh, he's disrupting the meeting. No, you're disrupting the meeting. Please take your seat.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This one concerns something a little different. This is information, this is a reward, $50,000 for information responsible for the hit-and-run death of Edward Nix. Again, Mr. Buscaino, who's not here, said, he sounded like me, LA is the hit-and-run capital of the world. We have more alcohol dispensaries, places to buy alcohol per square mile anywhere else, and I just want to say to all you alcoholics, come to Hollywood, drink as much as you want, kill any of us, and you'll kill mostly minorities, and you won't get caught, because snitches deserve stitches with a straight razor. And as far as what you said about me, in one ear, out the other, you can insult me all you want. HollywoodHighlands.org, Uncle Tom.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item 20, Donna Peirman, item 20.
I put one for 19 also. Okay, this is, oh yeah, this is the one that I heard that Tritonics didn't like this idea of this fund, and now is being done by Mike Fure. So this is not a good idea. This is a lot of money on this, for $20,000 for an idea that I don't believe this council on the California Dalmat works. So that could have been used for video conferencing for Van Nuys, so I'm totally against this idea. And against Mike Fure.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Now we'll go to item 1, Sean Awanda Beck, Barbara Gonzalez. Sean Murphy.
Yeah, here's another item. I support item 1. Thank you.
Wanda Beck.
So did you call Barbara Gonzalez?
Go right ahead.
Barbara Gonzalez, sir? Yes, thank you, counsel, for hearing me. I'm here today because I just recently found out that I have an impending lien possibly of $668 against my property. I wasn't aware that there was an original fee due. This was from back in 2008, and I'm here today to ask if I can appeal that fee and come to a reasonable possibly fee. As I mentioned, I wasn't aware that there was a lien possibly going to be against my property until just a few days ago, when I received the notification.
If I could stop you, hold her time.
Yes.
What's your address?
14361 Heron Street in Silmar, California, 91342.
Okay, what I'll ask you...
Yes, sir.
In fact, complete your statement.
Okay.
Okay?
Sir, I was aware that I, my neighbor, had complained about my property, and I took care of all the infractions. There were two cases against me. One of them was rescinded, the other one was closed. I misunderstood that close meant done and over with. Did not find out that, did not know that that meant closed, but there was still a $100 fine, which is now...
Okay, what we're going to do...
Yes, sir.
The councilman of your district has requested that we continue this for two weeks, which will then afford you the opportunity to get whatever information that you need.
Okay.
So, Madam Clerk, if we continue this for two weeks, it'll be till what date?
April 8th.
April 8th, so if you could speak with Mr. Fuentes.
Mr. Fuentes.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
What was it, Ms. Gonzalez or?
Yes, sir.
Beck? Then come on up, please. Ms. Beck? And give us the address.
Good morning. My address is 3922 Roderick Road.
Go right ahead.
And I'm here to ask for an appeal and a continuance. There seems to be a problem with getting communication between the various departments. When I first learned about this lien, I did bring it to someone's attention, and a letter was sent on my behalf to the mayor's office in 2007. I didn't get my permit until 2008, but at that time, no one identified that there was this pending action against the property. There is a confusion with the address. I've talked to Mr. Charles, I can't pronounce his last name. I'm asking for two weeks so that I can give him residency information, let's see, and all the other things that he's asking in addition to what I've already provided. And I would like to speak to a representative of the city council and the Building and Safety about some other issues that were just tremendously horrible that has happened to me. Thank you.
Why don't we try to deal with this issue, and maybe we can continue it, if it's okay with Mr. O'Farrell for two weeks? And he'll have a representative of his staff chat with you at the aisle over here, but we will continue this item for two weeks. Again, Madam Clerk, what date is that?
April 8th.
Okay, Ms. Beck, so it's continued to April 8th, and if you go to my right, there'll be someone for you to chat with. Okay. Mr. Walsh and Mr. Herman, followed by Yolanda Hernandez. Mr. Walsh has one minute? Okay. Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman, followed by Yolanda Hernandez. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. These are the non-compliance of code violations. This happens every day, three times a week. People come here, property owners who've been screwed over by you, they have no idea what's happening. Mr. Herman explained it, as he did to the previous speaker, and once you get, never has someone come up here and said, "I was unjustly, an unjust lien was put on me." Never have you said, "No, it was just." Because everybody who comes up here and says it's an unjust lien, every single time, that person is right and your bureaucracy is wrong. And if I'm wrong, tell me right now, how many people? Remember, they will overcharge you, and if you don't come here to city council and you pay it like a fool, too bad for you. But if you come and listen to us, people have saved hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars by listening to us coming up here, and liens are forgiven.
Thank you. Okay, who's next? Is it Mr. Herman?
Item 19, regarding sidewalk improvement program for a small fee of $250,000 brought by you.
Mr. Herman, this should be on item 1, not 19.
Okay.
Okay, so if you could switch to item 1. Thank you.
It is in the intent of the law, again, that our actions of business be taken openly and seriously and without any threat simply by a public speaker. Ralph Brown Act violation again, folks. 54950. I have a right to be heard and to be spoken about the conditions of our housing. Again, you've heard the outcry of the public, extortion on liens to your properties. So I'm only going to utilize this one minute and hold my time. Thank you.
Ms. Yolanda Hernandez, please come forward. Welcome.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Yolanda Hernandez.
My name is Yolanda Hernandez.
Mi dirección es 12881 Kelowna.
My address is 12881 Kelowna Street in Pacoima.
Mi número de teléfono es 8343751.
My phone number is 8343751.
Yo quería ver si me podían dejar pagar la mitad.
I wanted to know if you will allow me to pay half.
Mi pago es de 700 con 22 con 31 centavos.
The payment I have to make is 722 and 31 cents.
Yo nunca había recibido otra carta de estas.
I never received a letter previously.
Es primera vez?
This is the first time.
No me estoy negando a pagar, pero quiero que me dejen la mitad.
Yeah, I'm not denying to pay. I just want you to allow me to pay half.
You know, if you would indicate to her that we want to try to sort this out, so we're going to continue it for two weeks, and then she will have an opportunity to speak with some staff members or with Mr. Fuentes himself.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
We're going to go for a bit to general public comment as we're working through some issues on one of our items, so if I could get Sean Murphy to please come forward. So, if I could get Sean Murphy to please come forward, Donna Pierman to please come forward, and John Walsh. Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah. I support fixing our sidewalks. Not a 29 days am I gonna celebrate my 50th birthday. I hope we can celebrate it here in the chambers on the 23rd. I'm leaving it up to you guys. Also, we need our sidewalks fixed and stop MTA from raising the bus fares on Saturday. Come out to the MTA headquarters on Saturday at 9:30. We're gonna talk about the bus fare increase, which I am against.
Ms. Pierman?
Okay, first, I wanna say that diabetes is a problem that affects a large population of people. The presentation should have been all people with diabetes. So, let's get a cure for diabetes. Anyway, I wanna also say that Saturday, there's a protest for the huge bus fare increase coming this year at that One Gateway Plaza. The seniors, youth, and disabled are also affected. Miriam wanted to speak in front of the city council, but you cut off her video conferencing from Van Nuys. I thought Eric, the mayor, was supposed to be here today. I wanted to tell him that why don't you bring back the San Fernando Valley's right to speak, especially I already have asthma? How dare the city council wanna take 10% more for city employees' health care premium while giving big business tax breaks, giving businesses tax breaks? It's costs of $420 million. Why, city attorneys, did you approve the 10% health care? City employees went years without raises, then says it's a way to thank them? Most city employees can't afford the 10% health care premium. City employees should demand a pay raise and get it. How much of that premium is gonna go to the offset administrative cost?
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman, followed by Antonia Ramirez.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Find out by coming to my website. Congratulations. Watch the Bold and the Beautiful. Mr. Parks no longer plays himself. He's out there auditioning for roles. He didn't play himself. Is he doing his job here, protecting black people? No. He's getting his picture taken with a bunch of white people and making a lot of money out of it. Racist uncle, Officer Tom. Now, let me tell you, Hollywood is the unsolved arson capital of the world. The Warner Pacific Theater, the Movie Palace sits there, opened. People are living in it. It's going to get burned down. The LAFD, as we know, all they're interested in is getting jobs for their relatives. Come to Hollywood and take a look. It's the next big site. The library, unsolved arson. The corner of Hollywood and Vine, unsolved arson. The little church of Hollywood, unsolved arson. Los Angeles is the unsolved arson capital of the world. Why? Because if I'm a landowner and I've got a building I don't want on the property, all I have to do is hire someone to burn it down. And take a look across the street from me at Yucca and Argyle where they're digging and they're destroying the building. They're tearing the building down while Dawson is still renting it. Everything's out of control in this city. It is, and I'm telling you right now, the cop was reinstated. Vile, vicious, N-word using cop, Sean Hillman, vicious. It was taped and he was suspended and everybody voted to get rid of this racist cop, but his uncle was Deputy Chief Hillman and Beck, the racist swine that he is, put the racist cop back on to all black people. The cops are racist. Listen to Malcolm X. Don't listen to these scumbags that are...
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is expired. Before we go to the next speaker, can we continue item 19 until this Friday? And that date would be what?
March 28th.
Okay, so it's continued?
And also, Mr. President, there's a request for item 15 to go forth with.
Without objection. So, if I could get now Mr. Herman and Ms. Ramirez to come forward.
Government Code 54950.5. Government Code Ralph M. Brown. The people of the state of California do not yield the sovereignty to the agencies with which they serve. The people in delegating authority do not give the public servants the right to decide what is good for the people. Mr. Johnson over there said to me that I was violating your rights because I was disruptive. Mr. Johnson, for your information, as you sit there, I just want you to know that all I'm conducting here is business in interest of the public, Mr. Johnson. So, when you threaten to throw me out, when you walk over and say to me, "That's my last warning," here I am. Throw me out now during public comment because I want the world, I want all you Angelinos to know how racist and discriminating it is to insult the public who represent you, which is public interest. So, again, as a reminder, favoritism here of high-ranking officials should not squander us away, for we will continue to petition the state and the federal government when you violate our rights, Mr. City Attorney.
So, they...
Cure and correct is all we ask for. And again, don't forget the meeting on Saturday at MTA, raising our fares. And at the same time, in notion, think of this. Say no to any tax rate that this city is trying to impose upon all you Angelinos. We don't need any more tax rates. We don't wanna pay the half-cent percentage rate as well. Stick the 1% and again, fix our sidewalks, fix our programs, and continue with activity of service for our public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez.
Good morning. Let's fumigate the West Los Angeles Police Department and the 911 and the non-emergency dispatch centers for their unethical and reckless retaliatory gross criminal negligence and overt blatant obstruction of justice for perpetuating gang stalking and unspeakable crimes against humanity and/or the victims, primarily in the Wilshire Westwood Corridor and the Wilshire Marquee, a high-rise building. It's unsafe, uninhabitable, full-service, high-rise building. We, the lawful citizens, demand that the corrupted, dirty road cops of West LAPD be fired, arrested, and sanctioned with no pension benefits, and they are the following. Sergeants Walker, Abbott, Duke, Mark Durrell, Chris Raxdale, A. Bone, Officer K. McCarthy, Kirkland, Barone, Detective L. Smith, Detective Mastin, Detective White, and Detective Keith Thomas. Give 'em the royal boot and their co-partners in crime, the 911 and non-emergency dispatch center, fire and arrest and sanction with no pension, the following communication supervisors, T. Page and Verta Ugas. These two city agencies have engaged in unethical and predatory misconduct by denying resourceful assistance and/or any resolution or troubleshooting to the victims who honestly and genuinely reach out to this law enforcement and ancillary agencies for help to deter combat, investigate the crimes, and provide the victims with a valid and legal police reports and/or supplemental reports and to take immediate action. Shockingly, the West LAPD watch commanders and the 911 non-emergency dispatch centers arbitrarily decide who gets to be served and protected and who is falsely labeled crazy or wacko, and that is anybody who is exposing police corruption and fraud. Right here, baby. Hence, they both coordinate secret inner memos that deny the selected...
Thank you. Thank you very much. If I could have Mr. Marine and our last general public comment card will be Mr. Handel. Yes, Henry, come forward. Please, no applause. Go right ahead.
Yes, Mr. West. And would you tell them what's written on that card? MIA government employee from 1993 to 2002. And MOUs show 10% of the money sheltered from the pay of others than me by authority to hackle Bolton City Council. Now, we know that's government funds and we know that letting unions use the money of public employees as agreed by public and union officials got more than a little arrested. So, I am not a Heinz Hall employee. A Heinz Hall employee is a union representative who is paid from dues collected by the Heinz Hall. That's why Page 5 of the Laces Manual says Heinz Hall employees and contractors serving as trustees for the city of Los Angeles and the housing authority of Los Angeles cannot buy back their time in a public employee pension benefit plan. Do you understand that? We gotta put an end to these negatively implemented gun group agreements and negatively implemented gun group employment relationships. 'Cause you know what the acronym for them words is? Now, there's only one thing worse than being called Uncle Tom is a negative person.
Mr. Handel. No applause, Mr. Herman.
Good morning and thank you for indulging me. My name is Jay Handel. And I guess I just wanted to get up and try and end your public comment on a positive note. I haven't heard anything very positive since I got here. So, I just thought I'd say that, ladies and gentlemen, we have, our elections for the neighborhood councils have been going on and they've been going on very well. I would ask all of the council members here to put it out on your blast emails, to ask your constituents to come out and vote in their local neighborhood councils. That's all I'm asking. You guys have deputies that are sending stuff out. Send it out again and again to remind people. 'Cause in some areas, we're getting really great numbers and in other areas, they haven't had the kind of outreach they really need to have. So, I'm kinda throwing it on your shoulders to help us to get people to come out. But I will tell you that they are robust. Certain areas like Region 8 have surprised people, having over 200 candidates come out in the area. So, again, all I'm asking is something positive to come out of the public comment this morning, and that is, help us, help you, put the word out for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Mr. Kokorian.
President, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Handel briefly because I happened to see him on Election Day. I was able to vote for my neighborhood council elections and I just think that Dunn did a magnificent job of administering the elections, at least in the San Fernando Valley, that I participated in, and the turnout was tremendous. It broke records. And so, to the neighborhood council leaders and Dunn, who did such a great job of outreach to try to encourage engagement, I really wanna congratulate them for a job very well done.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian. That concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, I do not believe there's anything else other than on the agenda posted, or you, I'll let you tell me what we need to do.
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred?
That clears the desk.
Okay, so that would bring us to the announcement portion. So, again, I kinda blew the surprise, but Mr. Sadio, we do wanna welcome your new birthday. And it's my understanding there's a surprise somewhere afloat?
Oh, here it is.
And if Mr. Buscaino could lead us in happy birthday?
With great honor. What do you wanna do at the table? Put it to the center table.
Our resident tenor, Mr. Joe Buscaino.
Okay. As Mr. Sadio, the birthday boy is making his way, join me as we sing happy birthday. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Gil. Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
And it was Mr. Kokorian's birthday yesterday.
Well...
But don't sing again. I promise, Paul, I won't sing again.
So, I tell you what we did.
We love you.
What we'll do, Mr. Sadio, since it was Kokorian's birthday yesterday, by unanimous vote, we'll cut his cake in half and give you half of it. Congratulations. Happy birthday to birthday, Mr. Sadio.
You remember in Sacramento, we had a handful of us who were born all around this week. And so, Mr. Kokorian will bring this tradition down here. We call it March Madness.
All right. Any more announcements? Anyway, again, congratulations, members. Any more announcements? If we could all rise for adjourning motions, all in the council chambers, please rise. We'll start on the side by Mr. Paul Coretts. Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Jack Foley, an admired Orange County water leader who served two separate terms as chairman of the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. Foley, the 17th board chairman in the Mets' 86-year history and a retired U.S. Army Colonel, was surrounded by family members when he passed away Friday after battle with cancer. He was 83. At the time of his death, he was serving a second two-year term as Metropolitan's chairman. He also previously presided as chairman from December 1993 through 1998. He was first elected chairman in the wake of the 1987 through 92 drought, which in 1991 triggered shortages and rationing throughout the Southland for the first time in district history. Under his leadership, the MWD Board initiated a public process that spanned two and a half years of workshops and meetings, culminating in 1996 with the adoption of their Integrated Resources Plan. He led MWD in expanding conservation, water recycling, groundwater recovery, and water storage. And the investment of storage was highlighted in 1995 when the district under his leadership broke ground on construction of Diamond Valley Lake in South Riverside County, the largest reservoir in Southern California. The importance of storage has been evident in his latest turn as chair. Despite current unprecedented drought conditions, Metropolitan is meeting all regional water demands in 2014 by tapping its stored resources and avoiding mandatory cutbacks. He was a major figure in water and sanitation matters, served on a number of boards appointed by Governors Duke Magin and Pete Wilson. He also served as the district representative on the Colorado River Board of California. He was also a veteran of two wars. His latest, his last military assignment was as district engineer in five southwestern states for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers until his retirement in 1976. He also commanded a company during the Korean War and a battalion in Thailand during the Vietnam conflict. He also served in the office of the Chief of Staff as his Chief of Public Affairs for the Army Corps of Engineers in Washington, DC. He had a bachelor's degree in engineering from the U.S. Military Academy at West Point, a master's in civil engineering from MIT, a second master's in mathematics from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. And he is survived by his wife, Mary Jane Forster Foley, a son, John Foley III of Sun Valley, Idaho, a daughter, Ann Ziegler of Laguna Niguel, several stepchildren and grandchildren. And in acknowledgement of his military service, Foley will be interred at West Point, and a celebration of life event is planned at a date to be determined. And in lieu of flowers, donations may be made to the West Point Association of Graduates.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Any more on this side? Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Artemis Porter. She was born in Bolton, Mississippi in October 1939, passed away March 6, 2014. She attended Utica Consolidated High School and graduated in 1963. Upon graduating from Jackson State University, she taught classes in general science, physical education, counseling, and guidance in Meridian, Mississippi public school system. In 1965, she relocated to Omaha, Nebraska, where she continued her teaching career in the Omaha public school system. She taught adult basic education to individuals who wanted to receive their general education diploma. In nineteen seventy, she relocated to Los Angeles, where she became a permanent resident with no desire to relocate elsewhere. She took a break to become a wife and become a mother of one son who she truly loved. She became involved in the Seventy-seventh Street Police Department in nineteen seventy-six after she discovered that other neighborhoods had block clubs. She took the initiative to find out how West Fifty-third Street between Figueroa and Hoover could organize a block club. Once receiving the procedures, Fifty-third Street Block Club was organized with great success and participation from all neighbors as well as the senior lead. Artemis became the neighborhood watch captain and eventually the community police representative. In September nineteen ninety-four, she received her diploma as a graduate of the First Community Police Academy Serdity Morning Class, which was held ten consecutive serdities. Artemis was asked to join the CPAB and has been a dedicated member for the past fifteen years. She was active at Seventy-seventh Street in many ways. She's the first CPAB secretary voted by her peers. She donated computers to support the youth program. For the past three years, she was the coordinator of the annual officer appreciation luncheon. She retired from the University of Southern California's Saul Price School of Public Policy in two thousand and nine, after thirty-four years as a facility director and IT coordinator. Over the course of her tenure at USC, she established many bonding relationships among administrative staff and faculty. She became an USC ambassador in goodwill in the community, helping other individuals to obtain jobs, assisting young people to enroll, and informing community organizations of the resources that were available. She is survived by her son, two brothers, and one sister, and a host of family members.
Thank you. Now, look to my left, any adjourned motions on the Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have two. Gilbert Hernandez Roque of Wilmington passed away on March twelfth at the age of fifty-seven. Within his lifetime, he dedicated himself to the youth and children of our communities, particularly Wilmington. He worked with the Banning High School Pilot Football Teams for decades, as well as Harbor College. His latest work was with the Wilmington Carson Pilots, where he was known for having the heart of a true volunteer, smile on his face, and always happy to be a part of the team. He will be missed by his loving family, close friends, and those he met on and off the field. He leaves behind three brothers and three sisters. May Gilbert Hernandez Roque rest in peace. Also, if I may, Michelle Denise Hooper, I ask that we adjourn in her memory, daughter of Housing Authority Commissioner Lucille Hooper, passed away March ninth. Michelle was born in Mississippi on New Year's Day, nineteen sixty-three, and moved with her family to L.A. in nineteen sixty-nine. She attended Manual Arts High School and continued her education at Los Angeles Southwest College. Michelle also liked to laugh and joke with family and friends. She also enjoyed large gatherings and cooking. She enjoyed playing cards as well as dominoes. Michelle always loved her sports, especially her beloved Lakers. She leaves behind her mother, Commissioner Hooper, her son, Justin, and daughter, Tamisha, and many members of her extended family. I understand there was an incredible funeral service that was held earlier today at Glory Bound Missionary Baptist Church. May Michelle Denise Hooper rest in peace.
Okay, any, Mr. Sadio?
Yes, on Friday, you know, I was unavailable, as I attended a funeral, and the funeral was for Richard C. Mossberg. He was born in nineteen thirty-one, Long Beach, California. He passed on March fifteenth, four boys, their wives, half a dozen grandchildren, and some great-grandchildren. He had attended UCLA and graduated from Berkeley. He was an engineer. He was part of what we called the Greatest Generation, part of those groups that survived the Depression and then went on to create a life. He worked for the county for thirty-five years straight, Public Works. And so at his funeral, there was great signs of all his efforts, all his moving bridges, working through floods, all the natural history of the region since nineteen fifty-five to nineteen ninety, he was a part of it. He married the love of his life, Lydia, in about nineteen sixty or so, they met on a blind date. It's a great story, because he was a quiet, you know, he's an engineer, tall guy, quiet, good-looking man. And his friend said, "Look, you know, I wanna take this girl, but she has her friend, and I want you to come with me," right? So he went, and she was beautiful. She looked like Elizabeth Taylor, a young Elizabeth Taylor. And so, as he said, "From there it was history," told the family. And so he married her, adopted her two boys, they had two more boys. Lydia was my Aunt Lily. She was my dad's oldest sister, and they grew up in deep poverty in Barstow, California. She had two jobs, she was the oldest one. She was the first one to make the trek out here to Los Angeles. My dad followed a few years later. He was a great man. This man was enjoyable, very neat, very organized. When you went to their house, went to their garage, everything was put away, everything had a place, but he was a real, as I grew up, I saw him, he was a real decent human being. He did scouting, had a scout troop, just a decent man, took all the kids to wherever they wanted to go, took them everywhere, made sure they got all their toys, but, you know, taught them, to put them in the right place, just a great man. Thirty-five years with the county, Mr. President, Public Works, and did some great work. And so Uncle Rick has left us. It was obviously very, very sad, as my father's side of the family. Only my aunt is left, and so we'll spend more time with her. She misses both her brother and her sister and the rest of the family. A great guy from San Pedro and well-known family. My, one of my cousins follows his dad to Public Works, one of their cousins is a teacher with his wife, and they work at the same school as Mrs. Buscaino works. And so it was, it's a moment of both happiness, happy to be here on my birthday, but a great sadness to not have my Uncle Rick around. In my household, there's a lot of energy. You can imagine when they would come to Borah Heights, bringing the four kids, and then us in our small house, everybody cramped in the kitchen, Uncle Rick always took his seat, sat upright, and just let all the craziness go by him, you know? And if you knew my aunt, who was a dancer and who had her kids dance, there's a lot of dancing going on in my household, right? Flamenco, folklorico, ballet. She believed that dance was the way that she was able to get her husband, so she promoted it with great advocacy. He was always just a kind of quiet guy there, taking it all in, so. May God rest his soul. My cousins are doing well, and I shared with many of you on Friday some of the great pictures that they had, so. God rest his soul, thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Mr. Sadio, and I'm sure there's several of us that always envy a man that could keep his garage organized and cleaned. I don't even wanna look into mine. But anyway, Mr. Sadio is requesting members that we take a photograph with him at the center table. With that said, this meeting is adjourned.